All right, y'all ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Ward, Ms. Chen, y'all? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call to order this March 17th, 2025, St. Patty's Day edition of the PDB Committee. If you would join me if I could ask Mr. Frittel to open us in a word of invocation.
Please bow your head. Tonight I go about the business of Dorchester County, please be with us and give us guidance and wisdom. We pray that you will continue to watch over our public servants, fire, police, EMS, and our military. Please keep our county, our state, and our country in your blessings as we do your work. I ask you this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Frittel. At this time, we have a request to approve of a roadway connection to Britt Green Road for STANTEC. I'll turn it over to Ms. Reinderson, the Director of the Planning Group at this time.
Yep, yes, sir. This first item for your consideration is a road connectivity request. So just like we saw at the last meeting, this one is for development in the town of St. George, proposing to connect to Britt Green. This one actually was caught after it started going through the development review process. So Phase One, I believe there's a total of three phases. Phase One was already approved, it's been under development, they have a final plat. And Phase Two is currently under review for their preliminary plan. But the development is approximately about 175 homes, broken out into three different areas. You can kind of see on this image on the right, there's Britt Green right there where it ties into Academy Road down there. Britt Green Road being a county road requires the connectivity portion. Academy Road, even though they're tying into it, is not a county road, it's a state road. So they're not having to get approval to tie into that run. I believe there's about three tie-in points along Britt Green Road for the neighborhood. There was a TIA that was done as part of the development. It was based on a conceptual layout, actually from when they were going to develop in the county as a cluster development. But the TIA said that there were not going to be any impacts that required any improvements. So they've broken out all those ingress egress trips across those four driveways. And I believe there's probably about equal going out to Academy Road and out to Highway 15. So it's not going to require any dedicated turn lanes, it's not going to require any intersection improvements. Britt Green, as you can see on here, is a very rural road, no curbs, no gutters, no sidewalks. The development with itself will have sidewalks, it will end them out to Britt Green Road, but it's not going to carry them down because it really is just a rural road. We looked at it, we didn't see any issues with it, any conditions to impose. The traffic impact analysis indicated that development impacts would be negligible. So we're recommending approval of the request, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You've heard the recommendation? Do you have a motion?
I've got a couple of questions, go ahead.
Well, let's, I'll make, I'll make the motion for discussion.
Yep. So you got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And I'm gonna let, I'll defer to Mr. Frittel and see because we didn't have any conversations. So we'll see what he's got to ask, I've got a number of questions.
I do too, and I understand that they're not asking for any, or the, the report doesn't show any upgrades need done on the road, but I kind of disagree with that in my opinion, but that's personal opinion. We've got three developments going on that road, or we've got one development on that road in three different locations. You're going into Academy Road where a school's at. And I feel that the possibilities of additional growth on the opposite side of the road and stuff, I think that there needs to be some upgrades done on the road, some turn lanes, and possibly a sidewalk if they're going to the school, which is right down the road. I wouldn't, I'd hate to see people walking, those kids, if they walk to school to the academy, right down the road, that there might need to be some upgrades to that road. We've got the transportation people here now, and the condition of that road, I don't, I just don't see those houses on the road in that condition right now.
Thank you, Mr. Frittel, Ms. Chenus.
Well, you go to the other one. I'm kind of curious, so we talked about Site One.
Site One on the...
Site driveway number one?
Yes.
Do you, what's the, how many homes are in that section right there?
Oh, I forget the breakout, I don't think I wrote down how they were broken out. You can see, the graphic on the right here, if you look at this one, you can see there's a faded or faint blue line in here. That is, it's actually Phase Two. Site driveway one lines up with Phase Two of the development. So it's that squared area.
So they're all interconnected between the site driveways, one, two?
One and two are now connected. Initially, when they submitted for their initial TIA, they were not going to be connected. But as they've gone through the development review process, they are connected.
I mean, I looked at it from the standpoint of, if there's one driveway into a development with that number, that violates county ordinance at this point in time.
Yeah, and it's going to actually be broken out. Phase Three will be down closer to Dorchester Academy.
With two exits, I don't disagree with. My biggest concern, and if the developer wants to put in their agreements that very clearly that, hey, there's not going to be any additional sidewalks in here, so that the home buyers know when they go to close that there's not sidewalks out there.
Right.
The home buyers ought to know that, that there are no sidewalks. So the expectation is not there. This is still in the county, not in the town of St. George, is that correct?
This is town of St. George, which is why this request is being made.
So the town is, that's right, from a connectivity standpoint, and we talked about that. But again, the concern with me always is, they ask for sidewalks. That probably, my biggest concern about that is the, again, with the school there, if they're walking to school, it's, it becomes problematic. We would require that, from our standpoint, if they were within quarter of a mile, half a mile of a school, we would require those sidewalks from that connectivity standpoint.
Yeah, it, we would ask to see it and certainly require it if the density was high enough.
That's the biggest concern I have on that. But it is in the town. I did actually meet in a different, not related to this, with Mayor Hart today, and he had mentioned this, I think specifically. So this, this could ultimately end up being a county project as we move through some of the agreements with the town as well. So that, that has to be a concern as we look at that without question.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chenus. You know, again, the, the school being directly across the street, that was the concern. And the question really, why wouldn't we, you know, put the sidewalks? And then the connectivity to the other roads, thinking ahead long-term, right? And obviously ultimately being, what is that, Academy Road onto 15, right? Would be the two connections.
For Britt Green, yes.
Ultimately, right? And I believe there is a sidewalk, if my memory serves, on 15 or no? Heading to, towards St. George?
I do not recall if it's on that portion of 15 or not.
I can't remember either, so that's why you're the expert. So that would be, you know, certainly, and then at a minimum, you know, increase the shoulder as well due to the volume, especially when you're going to have kids coming to and fro, in and out of these neighborhoods, going to the school, going to the bus stop. I know most of that will be confined to the internal, you know, roads of the subdivision. But it is a concern, because there will be some going across to DA, I would imagine. Just something to consider.
I, I think to sort of mirror what you're, just to make sure, and I don't know if the developer is in here from that standpoint, but when you look at that, I'm not necessarily looking at, at a sidewalk down the entirety of Britt Green Road from 15 through, but, but at least from one of the connections towards Academy from that standpoint. Again, no clue how many kids are going to be there, but that.
And I would imagine, I do see sidewalks in the actual neighborhood, correct?
That's correct.
So it would be logical to think that possibly it would be in addition as a value add for the community and for the residents to be able to access or have some safely to the school across the street. And of course, the amenities there within as well, the different sports fields and playground, and I don't believe that is...
I just know the abuse that we're getting on some of the, on 61, on the schools over there that don't have sidewalks to them, that people's real worried about the kids walking to school and that kind of stuff. I think it's a great development, it's a great site and everything, I haven't, but I just, I would like to see some upgrades on the road going to Academy Road.
Yeah, sir, come on up, come on up. Just give your name and... Yeah, come on up, please. Thank you, Ms. Reinderson.
Phase Three, so the little, the little block you see down at the bottom would, would have been Phase Three. We're not doing that anymore. So there's 162 units, the initial TIA was done, was 175, we're only doing 162 units. So we decreased the number of units. Phase One and Phase Two are, is basically what you see on the screen right here. I wish I had something I could point it out. But there's a little dark line that looks like it's right in the middle, that's the break between Phase Two. There's 76 units, 86 units in Phase Two. Again, the little, the blank area you see that fronts Academy, we actually don't even own that property anymore. So that was to be a Phase Three, but we're not actually doing Phase Three anymore. So the site plan that you see on the, on the screen right there is the actual site plan that we're building now. So we're not putting any more homes than what's there today.
So if I'm following you, you've got the first Site One and Two, and then as the road starts to turn towards Academy Road, that site there in the bottom of the screen on your left-hand side is no longer being developed?
It's not.
Okay.
That's, that's a field now, it's part of the negotiation before, we bought the property to be able to annex into St. George. That was a give to the person that owns that, that other property down there. So that was, that was part of that. So we're not going to actually build anything there anymore.
But you still own the property?
We do not.
Oh, you still...
We actually don't even own the property anymore.
Okay.
The difference in 175 and 162 is, by my math, still not terribly impactful, one way or the other.
Yeah, the reduction, I mean...
Yeah, that's not, if you, if you just said 175 to 100, we might have been talking about that being a substantial reduction from that standpoint. So just, just to be clear.
Yeah, I get it, I was just, I wanted to add that there is a reduction, slight reduction. Any other questions?
Do you feel that Site Three will be developed by another developer?
I think it's being marketed, it's being marketed out there. The, the person that owns the property is looking at a bunch of ideas. I mean, I've looked at it.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense for us right now to do that deal. We got 162 right here, so we're just getting started.
And this is, what's the width of Britt Green?
It's a standard, it's...
A school bus and a, and a car can pass at the same time?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a standard width, county road, I mean, it's 22 feet. I go on a limb here and say 22 feet, it's a standard left and right.
Any further questions? All right, hearing done, any further comments? Ms. Reinderson? Any additional?
I don't think so unless you had any additional questions.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
That's a good question.
Or amend to delay until further discussion is held?
I'd like to motion to delay till we, till we get a, an idea about what we want to do with the sidewalk or whatever, and the turn lanes.
I'll second that. Ms. Chenus, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor to the amendment to delay pending further information and discussion held on road improvements? Signify, I was saying aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Motion's laid. Next on the agenda, we have a request to approve the use of $500,000 in green belt funds as a contribution toward the acquisition of a conservation easement, the terms of which are set forth on the Low Country Land Trust Conservation Easement Substantial Term Sheet dated November 4, 2024, on four parcels of land totaling 296.74 acres located at South Parlour Avenue in St. George, and 058-03-04-005. Said conservation easement to be held by the Low Country Land Trust. Ms. Reinderson?
Yes, I'll just give a brief introduction, with the Low Country Land Trust will be presenting the item for you. But this is a request for $500,000 in green belt funding for the purchase of a conservation easement on 200, about approximately 297 acres. This is four parcels of land, just under half of it is in the town of St. George, the other half is in unincorporated Dorchester County. You can see, a little bit closer up there, the town limits of St. George with the property in it. Also in the lower left, in a pinkish kind of color, is the Youngs Farm Track that was also recently approved for green belt funding for a conservation easement. Under the terms of the easement, the property will remain, I think, generally unsubdivided. You could have a total of three parcels, three homes. The intent is to keep it in an agricultural or undeveloped state. The property went before the Conservation and Green Belt Advisory Commission at the beginning of the month. They unanimously recommended approval of it. It had been before them back in December, they had deferred it to allow additional site visit opportunities, a little additional discussion time with the town of St. George. But when it came back to them in March, they unanimously recommended approval. I think the Low Country Land Trust will touch on it, but they're going to be contributing $300,000 as well towards this conservation easement. The remaining value, just over 6 million, will be donated by the property owner. And a couple of things that just came up briefly during the Conservation and Green Belt Advisory Commission meeting, and I think Ms. Chenus, maybe you had requested some of these maps. There was a question about the developability of the property, wetlands and FEMA flood zones. This map shows the property, it shows the portions that are within flood zones. Now, reminder that wetlands can prevent development from happening, or certainly make it much more expensive. Floodplains do not prevent development, we see developments within floodplains all the time. But you can see the extent of the floodplain on the property. Most of it is within the parcels that are in unincorporated Dorchester County as opposed to the town. Same with the, the wetland layer, the wetland layer is spotty, you know, it's not the best, but it's a good reference guide, and it shows that the predominance of wetlands are on the county parcel. And then I think there's also, just showing the water and sewer availability in the area as well. But I will turn it over to the Low Country Land Trust unless you had any questions for me before I sit down.
Do we have any idea where the power right of way and the gas right of way run through this at?
Yeah, you should be able to see on this aerial right here, you can see where that power line right of way runs through the property.
And the gas right of way runs with it?
I am not 100% certain, but maybe the applicant will be able to get up and answer that.
And in terms for comps for the UTI tract, you referenced the Youngs tract, was that considered in the comp?
I, you know, I don't recall which parcels were included in the comps for the appraisal, and I don't recall if the Youngs Farm was one of those comps or not.
No problem, thank you. Next up? Thank you, Ms. Reinderson.
Thank you, Ms. Reinderson. Good afternoon, Mr. Crosby, Mr. Frittel, Ms. Chenus.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity to present on this project to you. And I will wait till the presentation's pulled up. Is it not there? Saw it earlier. Mr. Rations. Okay, all right, thank you. That's good. There it goes. There it is. All right, thank you. My name is David Ray, I'm the Chief Conservation Officer for the Low Country Land Trust. And we appreciate the green belt program and the opportunity to bring projects in front of you today. We're here for the UTI tract, and you've seen some maps already, so a little bit of duplication here. But this is the property, this is owned by the UTI family, which have owned portions of this tract going back to the 1800s. And actually, it was conveyed into their family, that portion, from the founders of the town of St. George. The family has a very long history with this property. This isn't just something they came upon lately and decided they wanted to conserve it. It's a very meaningful place to them, and it dates back to the earliest days of the town. You can see the general location within the county there, up in District One in St. George. A few highlights about this, it's a bargain sale conservation easement, as was mentioned earlier. Our request of $500,000 is, it's worth noting, we are seeking 7% of the conservation easement value of this property. One of the norms in South Carolina conservation, when we think about a bargain sale of a conservation easement that, for instance, we're going to take in front of the Conservation Bank is, we think of maybe 25%, 33%. It's actually gotten up to where in order to work with landowners now in a lot of places, you see those percentages going up to 40%. This is an incredibly low percentage of the conservation easement value that we're seeking for this project. So I wanted to make sure to point that out to you all. The property is used, it's a timber property primarily, it's also a wildlife habitat, and there's food plots on the property. Recreation occurs there, freshwater wetlands, as we mentioned before. And I'm going to show you some other conservation values in a moment on the property. But we did take it in front of the Conservation Bank in December. We wanted to be able to come to you all and say, we are bringing match to this project to leverage the funds that we're asking Dorchester County for. We took it in front of the Conservation Bank, they enthusiastically awarded us a grant of $300,000. And so we have that. And so we have that in addition to the very large amount of donated value that the landowner would be making in bargain selling this conservation easement. It was mentioned earlier, uh, the Dorchester County Green Belt Commission unanimously recommended approval of this project. One of the other characteristics of it is that it has eighty-two acres of prime farmland soils and seventy acres of soils of statewide importance. Those are mapped by the, um, US Department of Agriculture, N R C S. I was just having a conversation last week here in Dorchester County with the Farm Bureau Land Trust folks, and they were talking about how accurately those soils are mapped. So I think you can really rely on that information. And it's worth noting, these are really valuable soils for growing things. And it's, it's half the property essentially that is in those type of soils. And while forestry is being practiced on the property, one of the things with our conservation easements are, if it's a working lands project, and that is a good, a good deal of the rationale for doing this project, it can alternate between agriculture, between row crop agriculture and timber production. And so those soils are going to be available if we're able to do this conservation easement for timber production or for agricultural production. Another thing to note, water quality protection. This is the kind of, the reason why we do, you know, I think y'all know because we've come in front of you before to work on a fee simple project where we were acquiring land that would become a Dorchester County park, where people can walk on it, any, you know, anytime that the county regulations allow that park to be open. We think of a conserved landscape as consisting of those type of lands, but also private conservation easements. And we do that not for the benefit of the landowner that owns it, not primarily, they may want that to happen. But the reason we do it is because there's all kinds of public benefits that flow from protecting the conservation values that emanate from those private lands. And one example of that is water quality protection. And this property is bounded by Gum Branch, which flows into Indian Field Swamp, uh, which itself is a valuable resource, and then flows into the Etistow River. And so that floodplain that Ms. Reinderson was pointing out to earlier, protecting that and other parts of the property that could cause runoff is an important part of protecting water quality that benefits all of the citizens of Dorchester County and beyond. So I want to just show you some images of some of the mapping. These are things we look at when we're, we're looking to do a project, uh, whether it be a conservation easement project or otherwise. We look at the data and what it points to. So we, we're not bringing just any project, particularly where we're asking for public funding. We want to see what recommends the project. Well, this is mapping that's been created by the South Carolina Forestry Commission. As you, as you know, this is one of the biggest industries in the state. It also involves a lot of, uh, smaller private landowners who are able to, to, um, earn revenue through these working lands and also preserve conservation values as they do it. And you can see on this map that the UTI tract shows up as a high priority. You can see there's different rankings in this mapping that the Forestry Commission has done. It shows up as a high priority here. So that's one reason to protect it. Another reason, habitat. This is a, a mapping, um, exercise that is done by, um, the green infrastructure work. And you can see again on this one that the UTI tract shows up as being part of what we call a habitat core. So these are areas where there's enough preserved land for us to think about wildlife as having room to move and to thrive on these core pieces of properties. And you can see that's contrasted with other areas that are, that show up as forest fragments, which don't quite have the same kind of wildlife values as these core areas. Another map, this is, um, mapping from the South Carolina Office of Resilience. And that, that agency was formed to deal with the kind of problems that we're seeing here in the Low Country in particular, other places as well. But a lot of it has to do with flooding. And the Office of Resilience has done a whole lot of work to identify where our conservation priorities should be so that we are trying to ensure the future resilience of our landscape, of the places where our citizens live. And again, you can see here that a, a good deal of the property shows up in that Office of Resilience mapping, in that green as priority land for conservation. Uh, another source of information is the county's own comprehensive plan. And you can see here, this is the, the portion where the county mapped out where natural riparian corridor, meaning corridors along water bodies should continue to stay in a natural condition. And you can see, I've got a circle there, it's on the edge of the town of St. George where the UTI tract is, and that is mapped in the green color, which connotes that this is a place that the county has said it wants to maintain as a natural riparian corridor. And then the county with the formation of the green belt program did the, the green belt master plan. And there's portions of that plan that talk about why we protect green space. And some of it is for parks and trails, and some of it's also for protecting natural habitats that can, that contribute to community well-being. And as I said, even private lands do that, make that contribution, and they're a part of the full picture of conservation. In South Carolina, you know, you may know the governor, governor has set very large goals for conservation. One of the things that's frequently said about conservation in South Carolina is that private landowner conservation makes up a huge amount of the conservation that exists in the state. It's something that's been honored for many, many decades as a way to accomplish conservation. And so that's one of the reasons that we pursue conservation easements along with other types of fee simple projects. And it was mentioned earlier that this project is on the southern edge of St. George, uh, not too far from Young's Farm, which you all have funded. And, uh, we view this as being a continuation of the idea of a green belt around the town of St. George, working with a willing landowner. Just that, because the topic of development threat has been brought up, I just had a couple of slides just to point to why we think there is a development threat. Uh, one is just that the landowner has received at least four, um, inquiries and letters from developers, including a national home builder, to develop the property. Uh, the landowner would rather not develop the property. One of the questions have been at, that's been asked is, if a landowner says they don't want to develop the property, maybe that means there's no threat. In the conservation world, the way we look at that is, that's when we have a window of opportunity. If, if a landowner is determined to develop their land and the developers are knocking on the door, quite honestly, we rarely have a chance to protect that land. But it's when a landowner who really cares about the land and has a long attachment to it and is willing to work with us and willing to accept a fraction of the value of what rights they're giving up through the conservation easement, that's when we have a window of opportunity, and that's when we want to take action, to take them up on that offer and, and honor the landowner's wishes and provide public benefits in that way. So you can see on this map, um, the wetland coverage, according to the data, um, that we're able to access is not really that extensive on the property. Uh, so there's a lot of uplands on the property. Uh, this is the mapping of the hundred-year flood zone. Uh, Ms. Reinderson referred to it earlier. And, um, one thing that I wanted to note is, you can see there's the, the big map on the lower left, and there's three smaller maps on the upper right, which is just where I sketched out areas outside of the hundred-year floodplain. And, um, it's, it adds up to well over a hundred acres on the property. Uh, I, I think it may be something like approaching a hundred and twenty acres. So there's quite a bit of developable land on this property. And in addition to that, just, this is the exact same data set. And just wanted to note, while I know every, every development, um, is considered on its own merit, but there are developments, um, recent developments in Dorchester County that, um, have occurred right in that very same zone. So, um, we feel that there is a threat, even with the, uh, hundred-year flood zone that exists on the UTI tract, of it being, uh, potentially developed in the future. Last slide I want to leave you on is just to show you that, uh, this is a conceptual, uh, uh, plan for a development. Conceptual, yes, I mean, it's, it's an initial, um, concept. It wasn't drawn by us, it wasn't drawn by the landowner, it was drawn by a developer trying to purchase the property from this landowner. So you can see the, uh, the neighborhoods that have been envisioned for this property by developers. And again, um, it's, it's one of the things that points to the development threat that exists here. So with that, I want to, um, if there's any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to do that. And I thank you for your consideration of this project.
So I have a question for you. What's the zoning on that property?
Uh, it's different zoning on different portions of the properties.
What, there's four, four parcels on there. What's the?
Agricultural, residential, on the county side. Um, single-family residential for most of the property that's in, uh, the town of St. George. And then there's some commercial zoning on small portions of the property.
And how far is the property, um, that's in the town of St. George from the crossroads, the, the center crossroads of fifteen and twenty-seven?
I, I don't have a measure of that.
Mile and a half.
A mile and a half from the town?
Roughly, from, from the crossroads.
It doesn't seem.
The, the window's about, I, we, we can pull out a.
It's a mile and a half?
It's about a mile and a half from that crossroads of twenty-seven and.
I'd like to, yeah.
And seventy-eight, or, or fif- uh, twenty-seven, not twenty-seven, fifteen, from fifteen and, and seventy-eight. It's about, about a mile and a half, may, maybe a mile and three quarters when you get out within, within the town limits there. How much, uh, what's allowed in A R according to the county, um, as far as density?
I believe it's one house per acre. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So, so the, this, this fright night on the left-hand side is not actually permitted in the county?
Well, that, that may be the case. Um, I'm assuming that annexation is possible, uh, because it's adjacent to.
Would be.
To the town.
So, and, and I guess my, my question, when I follow up there, then it should, should the county be? I don't, I don't know that I want to be the police officer for Dorchester County from a standpoint of, um, stopping annexation if the town believes it is in its best interest. Uh, let me, let me put that in there. How much, uh, what's the sewer capacity allocated for that section of land down there as far as development is concerned?
I have a feeling you could tell me the answer.
I probably could tell you that, so, um, but in any case, I, mostly rhetorical questions, obviously, you and I've had the conversation on this. Mr. Chairman, just from my standpoint, looking at this, I am not at all opposed to green belt money on the property in total. The current agreement, to me, is not in the best interest of the county with the limited funds that we have. We agreed, um, and asked the voters to support five percent of our total transportation budget, or, or referendum to green belt, which was a, what now we understand is a measly thirty-five million dollars. Our goal was always to be able to match a hundred percent of that. So we were gonna, we were hoping we could get seventy million from that. This doesn't do that. Um, and we have done other ones that doesn't, that doesn't do that, um, without question. Young, Young's Farm keeps being thrown up there. When I look at the map and I follow Gum Branch down towards, um, Indian Field and to ultimately that direction, the acreage between the end of the UTI tract and the Etistow and Indian Field Swamp is substantial. So I'm going to save the headwaters and the remainder of it, where it actually is impactful at Polk Swamp's a little bit different animal because we've already invested two point one million, two, roughly into Polk Swamp reclamation with the Corps of Engineers. It's one of the reasons why, um, Polk Swamp, to me, was, was very important because it, it is just adding two hundred thousand plus dollars to a two-million-dollar project, which is a, a, that is a small amount when you look at that. I'm, I'm within what we would consider, in our next conversation, we'll be talking about urban growth boundaries. This is clearly within, um, in, in the one map that was in here that we saw was within an urban growth boundary, which again is something that the county is looking at place, putting in place to manage growth where we are willing to run water and sewer lines, um, which ultimately is, if you're a developer out there, you, you can look at those maps in the future and say, this is where we're willing to do this. We, we do luckily control part of that in the county. I realize how blessed we are to have primary control of sewer in, in Dorchester County when I compare it to some of the other, um, counties out there and what they don't have. Spending an hour plus on the phone in Senator Davis's concurrency meeting the other day. And, and I was, instead of being in there with people, I expected counties and municipalities. I was in there with conservation groups that made some rather outlandish comments. I'll be happy to share with you the governor's very aggressive goal for conservation. He's got some really good ideas, and I think there's some opportunities there that, that we, we can do things. Again, I'm not opposed to this enti- that, that the property, um, at least portions of this property going into the green belt and spending money on the green belt. I just don't know if us, the, the agreement as it stands is not in the best interest of the county spending our limited funds for that entirety. One of the things I ask, and I was hoping Mr. Taylor would show up tonight, and I don't see Edsel back there, but was the, the question, and one of the questions that I've received, I, I've been, um, made aware that at least some of the members of the commission have received is, where's the public opportunity on this? And, and I am prob- I'm, I don't, I don't want to speak for anybody up here, but I may be one of the, the, the ones that is probably more, um, amenable to conservation easements without public access in, in certain instances. But when you start putting property within, um, growth boundaries that we use to prevent sprawl specifically, and those conservation easements require us to jump over that property to develop other property, that is in and of its nature sprawl. There, there's no question about that. That, that's encouraging sprawl. Some of my concerns there. Again, I know there was a question about the, the opportunity for public access to at least a portion of this property, and I had asked Mr. Taylor if, you know, what, what those possibilities were, and I was told that there, there were none based on a previous, somebody felt like they got a bad deal on something. I, I'm not a hundred percent certain of that. I, I was not involved with that. Uh, and again, I am not, in its entire, in, in the entirety of spending green belt funds on this property, opposed to it. I am opposed to the, um, the agreement as it stands. I think, I don't think that is in the best interest of Dorchester County and the taxpayers from a standpoint of spending this very limited amount of taxpayer funds on, on that property that, that will be forever private with promises of future row crops. They don't exist there today. It's a different story if they were actually farming that for row crops. And I realize timber is, timber in South Carolina is a challenge right now. We know that, that's very clear. The value of that timberland may not be what it was just a few years ago. That, that presents a challenge. The, the flood zone, you're correct, it does not prohibit development in and of itself. But Dorchester County certainly looks at the development in A E zones very differently than we do in, in zones that are not in flood zones. Wetlands are another issue, so I, uh, uh, in the end, when I make the list, as I think it was Ben Franklin that liked to make the list on either side and, and weigh that list out, the agreement as it stands today is not what I believe in the best interest of the taxpayers and in Dorchester County from the green belt. Not forever, but the way that it's written today. I, I do think we can have some vast improvements on that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chenus, thanks, sir. I, I do, uh, agree with a lot of what you said, and I do like the idea. Uh, and I think we may need to take a playbook of, uh, one of the procedural things we did in the previous actions that we recommend a motion to amend, to delay, to carry on further discussion, to get more input, uh, from our folks in the western end of the county and to tailor this that would be best suited for all parties involved. That, because we, I think we could all agree that as it currently sits, maybe, I, I'll, and I'll certainly defer to let you speak as well, Mr. Frittle. But, you know, some concerns with cost, access, wet, you know, twenty-three, twenty-five percent, I believe, is what, uh, you know, the wetlands were. And then for the ag piece, that would be the private landowner, the recipient of those benefits, correct? Meaning the ag product productivity, as well as the timber productivity, that would go to the landowner, not to the Conservation Bank or not to the county taxpayer, correct?
That's right. Private landowners continue to be able to, to do that, but they're.
Right.
Also part of the agricultural community that no, no farmer can exist without that community.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure it was clear for, you know, the general public.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
A money-making thing.
Right, correct.
Correct. Mr. Frittle, or?
I, I want to, just one of the things, I wanted to be clear, because I know this came up, and I should have said this. One of the things about this, to be very clear, voting this specific agreement, this is not a zoning issue where we vote down and it. specific agreement, this is not a zoning issue where we vote down and it can't come up for five years, three?
One year.
One year, sorry, one year, the one year. This is not that. If we decide not to vote on this today, we could ultimately bring it up again next week if we had a special call meeting. This does not have the same standards that we have on zoning issues where if we decide this is not in our best interest, that we say, no, they've got to wait. This ultimately, those requirements, and I'm looking at the county attorneys as I say this, I'm correct, that, there is no limit on that. We can, we can say, hey, let's pump the brakes and have a conversation about this again, even if we do vote this down. And I would encourage that, to be very honest, so that's.
To pump the brakes to amend for further discussion?
I would, I mean, again, I, there's any number of challenges, I think, with this, with this the way it stands. There are some of the things that Kiera had in there, when you look at the wetlands, AE side of this, when you consider the other property in here. I have an honest, a very honest concern about this, that we have had a very limited number of applications to our conservation bank. We have a very limited, I've said that over and over again, we have a very limited number of funds, and I almost would much rather see a much more active, much more involved, I mentioned this to Ms. Reinerston today, almost a public grant type, not grant necessarily, but something much more public to get them involved, to understand what easements are, to understand what opportunities are, and have a competitive opportunity so that we are competitively comparing A to B to determine how to spend these limited funds versus then spending them all. And there are instances where we weren't able to do that. The pressure was on, we knew what it was happening, but we also knew that there was incredible pressure on that land. I look at conservation banks, and the South Carolina Conservation Bank, say, thank you for looking at these numbers, but I look at having sat through the meetings and showed them the physical maps, the heat maps that showed real development pressure, and have them basically beg off on the numbers. It's a little bit concerning to me. I've seen property go in conservation easements that maintain status because they, there really doesn't have any pressure for development. There is no water, there is no sewer. There are challenges in there that would promote sprawl if somebody decided to develop that. That's not for me to tell a county or municipality what to do, unless it's this county, but it is something that I think we have to consider, wise use of the land, wise use of, you know, we implemented some of these developments to try to control this, to manage this, let me use the word manage, and that's, again, my concern, and I promise I will not say anything else.
Well, I do think that is a very valid point there. I think it's two issues, because I agree, Mr. Reinerston, in terms of, you know, the green belt, this is a fairly new committee, obviously, for the county, providing a framework to have an open submission, so to speak, like these projects to get in the queue so our committee can prioritize, okay, and have more of a comprehensive plan, which I think bleeds into beautifully our next discussion about the urban growth boundary that we'll have here momentarily. But, you know, certainly, I think with the concerns and some, a lot of these moving pieces, that it would be advantageous to potentially amend, to delay, vote for any type of action this evening to gather further input while we tease out these additional pieces. Mr. Frittle?
I know, for me, I actually was, walked the facility, or rode the facility with the group looking at it originally, with the green belt groups. It's a great piece of ground, I will say that, a great deer hunting track that is currently leased for deer hunting. I didn't see any sign of any agriculture except for the use of deer hunting at that time. The homeowner, or the landowner showed no, he wanted to keep it the way it was, he was very adamant about that. But the one thing that bothers me, we bring up the Young Track. The Young Track was 225 acres, and our investment was $100,000. This is 297 acres, and our investment is half a million dollars with zero access to the property. I think we need to sit down and take a look and see what we can work out. I think if we were to put a half a million dollars in there, some people in St. George needs to have access to the property. I mean, the last piece of ground we bought was with the DNR, or WMA property that was going to have full access. The Young Track, I mean, the Berry Track we bought, it's going to be full access. We only spent $100,000 on the Young property, I think half a million dollars, total of $800,000 investment for a landowner that has no intentions of farming it. He did not look like a farmer to me, so I don't see, I don't see the farming going on there, being leased for deer hunting. Let's sit down, let's sit down and take a look and see what we can work out on this project. I would like to see the land conserved, but we need to do it the right way, and like Mr. Chenus, Councilman Chenus said, we need to look at how we can leverage that money, and I don't know if a half a million dollars is the right time right now.
So, thank you, Mr. Frittle. I think that what I'm hearing, there's more work to be done, so, versus taking action. And of course, one of the things that we didn't discuss that has been brought to our attention is obviously, it's very clear we have a seat vacant for District One, right? And I think, you know, if it were one of us, we'd want to be, you know, present for these discussions as well, whoever that person may be, that is elected to that seat representing District One. So, you know, with all of these factors on the table, I would like for us to consider a motion to delay for further fact-finding information, to gather further input before decisions made, but I'll open that up to the.
I make a motion that we delay this and negotiate on what we can, how we can make this project work.
Is there a second?
So, the only thing I would ask for the delay is I would want a date certain, and I would say that it needs to be, that the meeting 90 days from now is when this comes back up, once we have something adequate to come back up before the committee. I mean, again, there are challenges with the agreement.
Yeah, I agree.
Without question, there are other opportunities here and in the interim, you know.
With that, I'd also like to make a recommendation that that be held in St. George. Is that possible?
The, I don't mind where it's held, quite honestly. The challenge, when I was chair of the PDB, the fact that I held public hearings in the area where it was rezoning was there because it was a rezoning issue. This is, the voters have come through and said, we agree with spending 35 million, you spending $35 million on green belt property.
Throughout Dorchester County.
So, that's throughout the entire county. So the challenge there is ultimately is where it falls in this case, because it's not a rezoning issue.
Correct.
It is, it is a, well, not a purchase or giveaway or some, whatever you want, whatever you want to call that, it's a little bit different from that standpoint.
Different animal, correct, yes, sir. So, yeah, I think that language, Mr. Franton, should be included as well. In terms of time, put a timeframe.
Delay for a term of 90 days for additional foundation.
Correct.
That would be the amendment then. If there is no main motion, that would be the motion, delay action.
You further recommendation for the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. It is unanimous who will delay, per the approval of the motion. Moving right along, it is unanimous. Discussion next on the agenda item is the discussion of the urban growth boundary. Mr. Ray, thank you as well for your time, appreciate you and you fellows on the green belt committee as well, Ms. Reinerston, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the urban growth boundary around those municipalities within the county's water and/or sewer territories. I'll open up the discussion, and again, this bleeds into this perfectly. Mr. Chenus?
And I, since I'm the one that requested this be on the agenda, I will start this. From the standpoint, we did this a number of years ago in Ridgeville, established an urban growth boundary because of some of the pressure and some of the requests that staff was spending in an order and an amount of time responding to areas that we really had no intention because of doing development out there because we did not have water and sewer in there. What may not be clear to many people is Dorchester County has been, and I'll probably get skewered for the comment, of being rather progressive in looking at things and passing ordinances that typically have been reserved to municipalities, not to counties. Our requirement that major subdivisions be placed on public sewer, one of the biggest ones that I've seen recently that has had some impact there. And again, that relates directly to this track, quite honestly, when you look at that track we just spoke about. But I think we should look at tasking staff, if you will, with looking at those growth boundaries around the municipalities, the major incorporated municipalities within Dorchester County, to kind of put the information out there that this is where we are considering any future growth. Obviously, it is working with municipalities since it is within their current jurisdiction or would be within their future jurisdiction, and this doesn't, in no way prohibits or curtails the process of any municipality from annexing. That is state law, they get to do that if they choose, with the understanding that if they annex, it is ultimately their responsibility to be able to serve that property. I think that's important to, again, if I will, task staff with looking at those growth boundaries. Meeting I attended, a team meeting I attended on Wednesday about concurrency, growth boundaries were one of the things that a number of people brought up. There were not enough county and municipal representatives in that meeting, in my opinion, but hopefully we will get more involved with that as the association of counties becomes more involved with that, to give that to our staff and to our counties as the opportunity as a planning tool for managing future growth and managing what makes South Carolina and Dorchester County the place we want to be. So I think instilling those urban growth boundaries is something that I would like to, at least the concurrence with this committee, to ask county council and ultimately staff to look at, not that their plate is not already full, but hopefully that will lighten some of their loads in the future by focusing things in the correct direction.
Yeah, I totally agree, because we ran into some issues just recently with developments that shot jurisdictions trying to develop when we didn't have the actual infrastructure in there, and then come to find out when they played their cards, where they went, didn't have the infrastructure either. So this would, this would definitely eliminate a lot of games that's just trying to be played at the time with department, or departments and stuff, and I think it's something that needs to be done, and it's been a wonderful tool with Ridgeville. And I make a motion that we really take a hard look at that and try to get that passed.
Well, it's funny you mention that, Mr. Chenus, or Mr. Frittle, because that is what set the alarm off for me, quite candidly, but in all seriousness as well. I had the privilege to sit in on a staff meeting along with a few other key stakeholders regarding the comprehensive growth boundary plan for Ridgeville. And folks, the reality here in terms of public service beyond water and sewer, EMS, fire, police, collaboration is key, and on the 10-year build-out, we are at capacity, point-blank period. What we have on the books today, that was alarming to me because, of course, many of you in the audience, especially those of you who are developers, you're knocking on the door, like, I'd like to go here, like to go there, and the answer, like, to your point, is not the sprawl, it's the urban revitalization, the urban infill, and to properly manage that in concert with the municipalities because they're not making any more water, so to speak. And, you know, the developers that are looking to do more and wanting to build more in Dorchester County, there's going to be a heavy investment required and needed in terms of water treatment, water sewer treatment facilities to even begin those discussions, because what we have now on the books is what we have capacity for. So if you want to be involved in those discussions, I think this is a great time, Mr. Chenus, bringing this up, because I agree, I think that there should be workshops, I think there should be public input to let the folks know exactly what we can do together and what we can't do, and be okay saying no with that in the best interests of our community and citizens that we serve. So I think this is outstanding, I appreciate you bringing it to the committee. I certainly look forward to working with the staff and our community to get further input, to make sure that we are aligned and properly prepare and manage for the future, and we're not chasing our tail. And I have to give my, I mean, complete tip of the cap to Ms. Reinerston and, you know, Mr. McNeil, just Mr. Ward, all of you folks, Mr. Formasano, of course, our attorneys, all these folks that are in this meeting to, again, let us know, obviously, certainly to our water and sewer direction, thanks so much. Also, again, we got to know, the left hand has to know what the right hand's doing, and this is a great way for us to open the door, so to speak, to get community input as well as staff, developers, water, sewer, and all the pieces coming together. I'll say it again, collaboration is key in these efforts. So with that, do we need a recommendation or a motion to move on that? I don't believe so. So any other motions or recommendations, we're a little over time from our.
Just adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second. Folks, just, if you are in here for the, and I got to get, I want to get the title correct here. There's two signup sheets at the back. One of them is to speak to council in general, the other one is basically a public hearing to receive input on community needs assessment plan. Make sure that you have signed the correct, hey, hey, can I, I'm going to get everybody down, hold it down just a little bit so I can finish this one. Make sure you're signing the correct sign-in sheet. If you want to speak on the community needs assessment plan, make sure you sign that one. If you want to speak to county council in that three minutes, sign up on that one, because it's not, they're mutually exclusive to each other. it's not, they're mutually exclusive to each other. I should probably turn this on first. I'd like to call this Dorchester County Council, this March 17th Dorchester County Council meeting to order. I would ask everyone to please rise. Councilman Byers will lead us in an invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, just thank you, first of all, for an opportunity to come together, Lord, to just be able to do the work to make our community better placed. Thank you for all the men and women here. Just thank you for the participation in that we're able to come together and just to be able to have the freedom to make our community better. God asks that you just bless our country, bless our nation, help us, Lord, just to be able to see through our divisions and work for the common good. Ask that you just bless our troops as they're deployed and keep them safe. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That might have been, might have been one of the longer PDB meetings, Mr. Chairman, just to...
I was realizing that. My apologies.
You're good. Good discussions. My fault for most of it. First item on the agenda is adoption of minutes for the March 3rd, 2025 council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda is recognition of Deputy Beverly Boyd, Dorchester County Sheriff's Office and volunteer on the Dorchester Amateur Radio Team, DART, for receiving the 2024 Amateur Radio Operator of the Year Award from the South Carolina Emergency Management Association. We going, I'm looking at Sheriff and Tom here to... You want to come forward?
Yes.
So, council, chair, Mr. Ward, it is our pleasure to also appreciate Deputy Boyd here, who, the DART team is the ham radio, amateur radio team that assists emergency management during disasters. They have a network of ham radio operators who are part of the team that can deploy to fire stations if we lose all communications and become the radio system for us. They do reports of weather when we had the ice storm and stuff, that gets fed directly to National Weather Service to help with their forecasting. It is a huge, huge undertaking. All volunteers that assist us with this program, and Bev runs it, and it's a, it's a team of a lot of folks that are engineers and all those kinds of personalities, and she manages them well. And this team has grown exponentially under her leadership, and we put her in for this award. And the award itself, the South Carolina Emergency Management Association actually asked the Tennessee Emergency Management Association to vet the awards and choose the winner. So it was completely blind, and she beat out a significant number of other applicants for this specific award. So we couldn't be more proud.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about this young lady. And she's first class. She runs our court security. She ensures that the judges are safe. We throw a lot of things at her. She never says no. It's always, I can do it, you can't do spirit. And like I said, this is a wonderful, wonderful person. And I'd ask you to give her one more round of applause.
Tom, before you walk, I want to make sure that everybody in the audience understands DART. And I don't know that, because that's pretty important, especially in the community on the coast when it hits hurricane season and power outages. So you want to give a real quick, or Deputy, if you would like to, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but...
Oh, I, people that know me know I'm not very bashful. But amateur radio has really come a long way with modern technology. We're doing amazing things on the airwaves. We are sending emails and ICS forms over the airwaves with no internet, no power, battery power, solar power. Even when communications are not lost, our team comes into the EOC, and we take a brunt of the call-ins through the radio. We are emailing resource requests over the airwaves, and it's freeing up the phones, it's freeing up the emails, and all the things that the state EOC is getting overwhelmed with. If you've ever been around an EOC, it's just so many phones ringing and so many demands all at once, and we're, you know, just another way to help out with that.
Thank you, again. Next item on the agenda is public hearing and third reading of ordinance number 25-04, an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance, Dorchester County, South Carolina, by deleting Chapter 36, Article 6, Section 36-180, Subsection A, Subsection 1, and substituting in lieu thereof a new section 36-180, Subsection A, Subsection 1, so as to clarify the applicability of the stormwater utility fee to parcels of land containing one or more single-family residential structures. And I'm going to ask Mr. Goldston, there you are.
Sir. Chairman, council, Mr. Ward. So what we've done here is clarified by amendment the stormwater fee ordinance. And if you would refer to A, in the first...
One second, we're going to put it on the screen.
Oh, sorry.
I got it, I got it.
Oh. Please go, please go.
There.
Thank you.
It's there.
It's there.
By the way, I'm Dr. Casey Byrd. No, you are not. I would never try to be. But if you would refer to the next page, please. In the next page, if you look at the current ordinance and the language under the bullet under A, says for a parcel of land containing one or more single-family residential structures, annual fee of $60. Realize that needed to be clarified. So if you look at the proposed ordinance, it's for basically the same statement, but it's per residential structure located their own. And I'll explain what that means with the next slide. So here you've got a plot of land where there's two residential units located on one, one plot of land. So that would be two ERUs, which would be $120. So it'd be $60 for each residential unit. So you go to the third. And on this one, you have some sheds there which would not qualify, because they're not residential units, and you've got three residential units on one plot of land, and for that one, it'd be $180. So basically, all we're doing is clarifying the language to be sure that's clear. That's the way we've been billing it all this time. It's just the language needed a bit of clarification.
All right. So just to be clear on that, Mr. Chairman, I mean, since you got a pole barn and a couple of really large sheds, does not matter, you just, we're just, that fee is only on the residence on the property?
Unless somebody puts a cot in there and starts living in there.
Copy that. Thank you.
Right now, you've got the big things, barna minims, people were building barns and putting apartments in them, and...
Yep.
Or the question, too, like a man cave, a lot of, you know, folks, or woman cave, but their garages turn into a place where they have a toilet and a sink. Would that be applicable?
Well, no, but, I mean, every situation is possible, depending on what they're doing with it. But if they're sleeping there day to day...
It's a residence, right.
And turns it into a residence, then yes, sir, it's a...
Now, does that count per DM? Now, does that count per diem if the wife kicks the husband out because she's mad at him?
I stay in mine a lot.
That'd be one of those Doja audits.
There's a couple challenges there because there's a couple challenges that violated residential zoning ordinances. You discuss them, just to be very clear. They may be doing them, but there may be other challenges to, for that not to happen. I will now, I didn't officially open the public hearing, but I will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to come up, state your name and address and have any comments on this, on the third ruling. Not appearing, I will close the public hearing. What is, are there any motions?
Can you approve?
Second.
There is a motion and a second any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive input on Community Needs Assessment Plan and the priorities for housing, public facilities, and economic development initiatives. And I will open the public hearing and ask Ms. Basha and Mr. Haver if they will come to the front and we'll get you started and then anyone, I think we've only got one sign up here. I'll have you come up, say your name and address and give you a couple of minutes to speak.
Good evening. The Community Needs Assessment is part of your Community Development Block Grant Program. Every year we go back and we just double check and see whether there are some additional needs in the community to identify because the Community Needs Assessment document itself is used as a reference when you apply to the state for any kind of the block grant funding. Under the state program this year, under FY25, there are basically up to $17.8 million available for different types of projects. The community infrastructure, a pot of money is the most used, which is the one where we can extend water and sewer to neighborhoods of low, moderate income residents to kind of increase the quality of their infrastructure. Community enrichment projects are things like libraries. You can do upgrades for public safety facilities and things like that. Your local priorities and ready to go, which are your, kind of your shovel-ready projects that you're lacking funding to do that would also benefit low, moderate income. So the spring round is coming up. Mr. Haver's going to talk a little bit about that, an application that we've been working with him to put together for this round again, like last year. And then the, in the fall, which is usually, we have a project put together by August, is when the community enrichment programs, projects can be applied for. One of the other things we do in the Community Needs Assessment is always kind of go through and update the demographics. The demographics that you see here are from the 2023 census community survey. So they're estimates based on a five-year, but there still are plenty of residents in Dorchester County and we look at where the clusters of those needs are. We were surprised just comparing this map to the one from last year based on the HUD, which is, you know, Housing and Urban Development, looking at how much of the county is still qualifying to be 50% or more areas of, of low, moderate income persons. So the bright red is where you get into 80% or more and I don't think that's where Stratton Capers is, but it's right next to that. So it might be right across the street. In the Needs Assessment document, we identify again, you know, looking at the infrastructure needs, looking at housing affordability, safety, because there is substandard housing out there, emergency shelters, public facilities, health, even food and medical access for the rural areas, economic development, and then downtown and neighborhood revitalization is another area of need that's in your priorities. So these are just some example projects that you can look at. The Stratton Capers project is one we're looking at, you know, replacing deteriorating pipes and pipes that are undersized for the areas that they're serving at this point so that you can have adequate flow to your fire hydrants. Looking at neighborhood revitalization plans, we did a neighborhood revitalization plan in St. George, gosh, maybe eight years ago, and we've been working with them consistently to try to implement that. And, you know, we've done libraries, community centers, and then recently we've, you know, heard a lot more about, you know, having access to medical facilities. And then while we were during COVID and post-COVID is when we added in looking at expansion to food access so that we could provide support to the different food pantries that are helping out during that period. I'm going to let you take over talking about the project, the current project that's being worked on.
Thank you, Catherine. Before I get to the current project, I just wanted to take a moment to mention that the Dorchester County Sheriff's Office, along with the community service staff, over the last 30 days, we have been going out to a number of the Crime Watch and HOA community meetings where we have been making announcements about the Community Needs Assessment Plan and updating this plan. And we've been getting a lot of input from the attendees at those meetings. And there's two common themes that we've been hearing basically at those meetings that we're going to be making a recommendation to incorporate those themes into this updated plan. Primarily what we've been hearing, and this is coming from Community Drive and Dorchester Manor and some of the outreach we've been doing in the Stratton Capers neighborhood as we've been going door-to-door for the income surveys, we've been hearing that public safety, dealing with infrastructure and facilities that deal with public safety in the neighborhoods is something that's key to the folks that live in those low and mod income neighborhoods. And what we're suggesting for implementation strategies is installing energy-efficient streetlights, identifying and filling in gaps where there's sidewalk issues to help with public safety and pedestrian safety, connectability, coordinating with Public Works and SC DOT to identify neighborhoods where traffic calming features are needed, coordinating with Public Works and SC DOT to identify comprehensive road reconstruction projects that provide correcting drainage, lane identification and delineation, provide crosswalks, ADA accessibility ramps at intersections, and signalization where appropriate, and coordinating with CARDA and Tri-County Link to incorporate bus shelters for, for public transit. And those basically will be included on, in the plan on page 13, under public safety. And then just today, we had, staff had a meeting with the Sustainability Institute out of Charleston County and they've identified some energy efficiency and weatherization projects and critical housing projects that they are interested in partnering with Dorchester County. So that being said, on page four under housing initiatives, I think it would be appropriate to include a bullet talking about providing sustainability initiatives, working with the Sustainability Institute for Housing Programs, dealing with weatherization and critical repairs for homes that address health and safety initiatives. So that would be a recommendation then to include on page four of the plan. And by putting those in the plan at this point, that'll open us up, making the county eligible to qualify for future funding, particularly with community advancement and revitalization funds. So that being said, I wanted to talk about the project we're looking to apply for in the current round fiscal year 2025. That application is coming up next month through the Department of Commerce. And if you'll recall, last year we had applied for a million dollars to do a waterline upgrade project in Phase 1 of Stratton Capers. This basically is a continuation of that project, dealing with another phase of that, Phase 2. On the plan, it's the area identified in blue and it's focusing on the roads primarily Mangrove Drive, Tanglewood Drive, Dandelion Avenue, Fig Tree Court, and Persimmon Avenue. And this would be what we're preliminarily looking at for the project budget is around another million dollars that we would be requesting from the Department of Commerce to upgrade the waterlines in the Phase 2 section of the neighborhood, approximately 2,500 linear feet. We would be upgrading the waterlines to eight-inch lines and adding four fire hydrants. And under this grant application, there would be 100% construction cost would be, the grant would cover that and then the county would be on the hook for 10%. And what we would be looking to match is in-kind engineering costs for the 10%. And if you recall what we had to do last year, the same administrative process for this year, we have to go door-to-door to all of the beneficiaries within that project area and justify that they meet the low and moderate income. You have to do surveys of the individuals that live in those neighborhoods. So based on what we've been finding is there is 65 total eligible LMI units that we have come up with of the 70, I'm sorry, 57 properties. Some of the properties have double units on them. We have been successful and I would say probably about 80% of those that we've did the surveys on, 82% are low and mod threshold, and 51% are more. So right now we feel pretty good that we're going to be able to justify we meet the threshold. We will know more in two weeks, once we, we complete everything and we get ready for our final application submission. We have about 15 surveys that we still have to complete yet. We have seven, we have to go back out in the neighborhoods on Wednesday night and pick up. And then there is a owner that is actually walking around eight of those surveys for us because she has tenants that she wants to personally get those survey results from us. So we do believe that we're going to be able to meet that threshold and qualify to get the funding. So where we are with our next steps, the preliminary plan, the draft plan, I should say, has been posted on the website. It will remain open through April 1st for public comment. And I know there's a number of individuals in the audience from the neighborhoods as well as the HOAs, if they wanted to get up tonight and speak, they're more, they're more than welcome to do that. But I think just on what I mentioned earlier, where I addressed most of their comments, the preliminary application, there is a preliminary application we have to make to the Department of Commerce, just to give them a, an idea of what the funding request is going to be from each jurisdiction. And that funding request is due this Friday. And then we do have to come back and hold a formal public hearing at our next meeting on April 7th for submission of our Community Development Block Grant application. And that application, then the actual filing of that is due April 21st to the Department of Commerce. And that's where we'll submit for the formal $500 request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now I have, on the public hearing, I'm just going to state this, you said a number. I have one signature on the sign-in for the public hearing for this Community Needs Assessment. If you plan on coming up to speak and you have not signed this, before you go to the microphone, I need you to come up here and fill this form out here. So I am going to, again, open the public hearing on the Community Needs Assessment. I'm going to go, is there anybody, I've got one name on the list. So is there, is there more than one person in the audience? If, you gotta come up, you gotta, I'm not, I'm not going, you're not on the list, so I can't invite you to know what that is. I'm going to get you to come up here and fill your, fill this, your name and address and phone number out right here and then, then we will, I'll get you up there. Thank you. I just got, I got one. Is there any other ones? I don't, all right. I'm going to let you, when you get finished signing, if you just turn around and walk right over there to that microphone behind you, you're going to be first. All right, so I have Ms. Chantel Broton, Broughton?
Yeah.
And I'm going to get you to state your name and address for me, please.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Chantel Broughton. I live at 144 Dorchester Manor Boulevard. I also serve as the president of the Dorchester Manor Neighborhood Association. So I just wanted to share my support and also thank Dorchester County, definitely Mr. Haver, for all of the work that they've been doing in our community, showing up to our neighborhood association meetings, listening to all of our concerns, working with us to identify the needs that we have for our neighborhood, but also to identify solutions for those needs as well. We could not do it without you. So thank you very much for all of the hard work that you and your team have been doing. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
For someone who didn't want to speak...
You did pretty good. The next one I have, and now that I can read the handwriting, Michael Frunk. I'm going to get you to come up, again, state your name and address.
Hey, how's it going? Michael Frunk, I live at 240 McClellan Way in Somerville. So when I was looking over these Community Needs Assessments, I looked at the year-over-year trends, I just had a couple of concerns I wanted to bring up and I was kind of curious as to what, you know, we do with these things other than look for grant money, right? Because if you look at year-over-year, rental costs have gone up over $100 per person. We have more people without internet in 2025, so that's a bit confusing and perplexing to me. And we have more units without kitchens, we have more units without adequate plumbing. So other than going for grant money, do we do anything to prioritize how we make people develop things in this county or implement these community needs into places other than grant money? Because it doesn't feel like we do when you look at the trends year-over-year. So if we're going in a negative direction in regards to community needs, and I continue to see issues where we have a lack of tax revenue for our county schools here, which would mean that, I don't know, maybe having more apartments, which actually generate tax revenue for our county schools, would be something in that. And we have an issue with our apartments not being affordable enough for the people who are here because they keep going up year-over-year. To me, that seems like a development issue. And I just heard we're at capacity in our water things, but those keep going up as far as new buildings. And so my, I guess my question is, if we're doing these Community Needs Assessments, why are we not taking them and applying them places outside of just getting grant money? That is my primary concern. Why are we not taking all this data and research we're doing and using it in places other than to ask for grant money from the state? If it's not just a way to get these things and do targeted free money actions, why are we not taking them and acting on them in a way to make sure that our development and the way we make people do and build things in this county is done in a way that aligns with these needs for our citizens and residents as well? Because it can't just be a way that we go and seek grant money. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Ward, did you?
Yes, sir. Typically, we don't respond in kind. You brought up a couple of different issues and I think one, that's probably one that is probably closest to the schools is the investment that county council approved of eight and a half million dollars to put in additional service for broadband. I happen to have my county IT director in the back of the room who headed up this project, but I believe if he comes forward, he will tell you that as a result of us investing eight and a half million, we were actually able to leverage eight and a half million from the private sector for a total of $17 million. And maybe, Mr. Walters, if you don't mind, again, hate to put you on the spot, but I know you're here, maybe just on that one project, if you'll speak to how that really has benefited areas that did not have broadband service prior to that project being completed over the last couple of years.
Yeah, absolutely. So we were able to partner, partner with two local ISP providers and implement around, I'm pulling this off the top of my head, 425 miles of fiber to rural parts of the county. This includes the back of every field, down every dirt road, and that's buried fiber. So it's protected against the elements much more than aerial fiber. It was an exciting project and it's since been completed and a lot of residents have signed up. I don't have any numbers on top of my head, but yeah.
Thank you. A couple of other things that you raised as concerns, one of them was, you know, generally implementing the plan. implementing the plan with respect to healthcare, which is identified in the plan. County has actually done two things. One, we were able to utilize our former women's wing of our detention center. Two, some criticism, we were able to secure USDA grant, but then the county added an additional $1.9 million, and that was put in place. And we were able to actually secure a contract with the Medical University of South Carolina that's going to be the operator, along with South Carolina Mental Health. And there are other projects that we'll be glad to take your information and follow up with you on. This is not simply a situation where we're securing CDBG funds, although the project that Catherine mentioned very specifically with the library is as follows. In St. George, we had a round, and many people have heard this story before, it was a $500,000 round. The county invested $3 million, and as a result, two of those came from the county coffers. We had a million-dollar grant because CDBG through Commerce couldn't find other projects to wear as competitive. And we did that particular project, not only did we expand the size of that library, but before we completed the broadband project, people were able to utilize that facility in the computer lab. We've done water and sewer projects in areas like Shady Grove. So there are a number of projects that we have been able to complete that you may not, or others may not be aware of, that we try to always put on our website. One of the things I would strongly encourage is that if you're not a follower, if you haven't gone to our website and signed in for notices, that's another great way to keep up with it. Just really trying to share information and glad to engage with providing additional information. But millions and millions of dollars have been invested as a result of us identifying these needs in the community.
And I guess I just, there are a lot of numbers thrown out there, and numbers are a good thing, but I don't know, you didn't quantify where those numbers come from. If you want to come up afterwards and tell us where they're building houses without kitchens, I'd certainly, Missy Hopkins would love to know that, just from that standpoint. All right, next item, oh, sorry, did I catch everybody public hearing-wise? I will close the public hearing. Thank you all tonight. Next item on the agenda is a request to address council. I have several of them, I'm going to go through this list, and I'm going to apologize, but I'll ask you to come up to the front, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. And the first one is Chriselda Reyes.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Chriselda Reyes, and I'm a resident of Dorchester County, living at the 100 block of Daniel Lane in Somerville. I stand before you tonight to formally oppose the permanent closure of Mentor Road near West Butternut Road. This decision was made without public, without adequate public notice or a traffic study and has serious consequences for residents, schools, and emergency services. So our key concerns are traffic, number one is traffic congestion and safety risks, because we would be rerouted to Orangeburg Road in the morning rush hour, and it is already heavily congested with three K-12 schools in the area, and the hundreds of homes nearby will force even more vehicles into a single access point, which will double or triple commute times. So residents were not notified in advance regarding this potential closure. I have been in touch with Ms. Emily Winn from Planning and Zoning regarding any developments, but I was told to contact Ms. Sunshine Trakas of Dorchester County Public Works and Transportation, but I have not yet heard from her regarding these plans. Second point is emergency response delays. If you completely block off Mentor Road, this will reduce critical emergency response times and putting resident safety at risk. We would also like to know, I do have one of our neighbors here in the same neighborhood where I am. If the fire department and EMS has been consulted, and if there's any public reports, we would like to make that known or forsake of transparency. We were also told that the Mentor Road closure is labeled a county-initiated safety project with, but we don't have any information yet regarding any traffic impact analysis or any safety studies. I don't believe that residents have not been given a fair opportunity to provide input before this decision was made. Under South Carolina law, any major infrastructure changes require public engagement, which has not occurred. So I respectfully request and call on the Dorchester County Council Planning and Commission to halt the Mentor Road closure until a formal traffic impact study is conducted and publicly released, and to hold public hearings for us to voice our concerns and to ensure transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before you step away, you've said several times that you have heard, can you tell me where you heard this?
So informal sources.
So you have not really actually heard this. Here, I'm going to, you had a chance here, so I'm going to tell you here, and we heard what you said. To close a public road, you are correct, it would require this council to vote on that. You will find nowhere in any county council minutes at any time that this council has ever voted to close Mentor Road. That would have been required. So I realize that I'm not trying to be flippant here, and, or maybe I am, just because we read it on the internet does definitely not make it true. To my knowledge, and I spoke with Ms. Trakas today, she was on vacation for a week, so that's, and I appreciate her going on vacation and coming back. And I have talked to Mr. Goldston, Ms. Trakas, my fellow council members about this. We didn't vote on it. We would have been required to vote on it. We have not voted on it. So that is whoever told you that, they probably should sign up for the county emails. We may be able to get some correct information out to them. So that's, yeah. Everything you said, you would, I think everyone up here would agree that all of that stuff would have to occur.
Okay.
And it never occurred. So that is not, there may have been a plan or someone saying, look at this, this is a possibility, but it did not ever appear before county council, which, as you've clearly stated, we would have had to do that. So if that helps you any and anybody that's in the audience about that, yeah, that's, you know, again, Lincoln did not say that on the internet, so that was certainly somebody's wild imagination.
Okay, so that's not happening.
Not, it is not, I will, I can't ever say never, but I can tell you that it's my opinion, as a former chairman of the PDB and pretty much involved with this, if the county attempted to do that, we would probably be violating some of our own ordinances that require multiple ways in and out of subdivisions that have more than 50? Might be less than that. I'm looking back there to see if, Kara may have already left. Five? Fifty, fifty. Five zero, right? Yeah. So, so what's that?
Can I have a call? Fire. He's not complaining.
So no, from Fire Marshal Jenkins is, that's the number that I, it's a national standard, it's not a, it's that we've adopted from the standpoint of the fire department. So, yeah, that would, that would present a challenge for me personally to vote in favor of closing that, simply because we would be violating our own ordinances to do that. Okay? Hope you feel better about that one.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Spread the word. The next, the next is Daniel Perhaska, and I'll get you to come up, name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. Daniel Perhaska, 104 Shenandoah Court, and have the privilege of serving as chair of the Dorchester County Conservation and Green Belt Advisory Commission, and greatly appreciate the opportunity to serve the county in that way. So thank you, county council members. There is a proposal for the conservation of the UTZ track, which I know is being delayed based on PD and B's recommendation, but just wanted to take this opportunity to express our thanks to continue working with council on this project. It is increasingly rare to find landowners that are willing to come to the table and help us engage in the important work of land conservation in our county. I wish they had more recent numbers on the value of this, but in 2011, there was a study that was conducted on the total value of ecological services. These are things that nature does for us for free that would cost us a lot of time and money and resources to replicate. And using some conservative estimates, there was a study that said that the value of those ecosystem services in 2011 was $125 trillion. Just to put that in perspective, the total global GDP of that same year was just over $90 trillion. So we have a real opportunity with these funds and with the UTZ track specifically to help preserve some ecological resources that are doing things for us that would cost the taxpayer money in order to replicate those services. We're grateful for the mayor of St. George, who has voiced his support of this initiative, and we always want to be sensitive to preserving our relationship with municipalities as we seek to go about this work. And we're very excited to be able to do more work in the northern and western part of the county. I know many of our proposals thus far have preserved land here in the Somerville area, but these are the taxpayer resources of all Dorchester County residents, and we appreciate the opportunity to consider proposals from the St. George area as well. And we, again, continue to look forward to working with council as we find a solution for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. David Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Council, Mr. Ward. I really find myself in the position to say what he said. Thank you, Daniel, for those comments. Thank you for the work of the commission, the Green Belt Commission, in considering projects. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to even have a green belt program and the citizens in Dorchester County, and I appreciate the careful deliberation that the Planning and Development and Building Committee gave to this project, the UTZ project, tonight, and for the opportunity to continue the conversation about how to accomplish conservation, including on this project. So we look forward to doing that, and we thank you all for your consideration of our projects. Thank you.
And last is Mr. Michael Frunk. And again, if you'll state your name and address, and we'll be all good.
Hello, Michael Frunk, 240 McClellan Way, and I guess it's fortuitous that I get to come back up here and speak, given that there's a little bit of dialogue to be had. So the data that I was speaking about earlier was actually based on your data. I compared your 2024 to your 2025, and those disparities were there. So even if you did a big 8, $1.8 million project, your internet disparities still went up, so clearly it wasn't enough. The things that I did come to talk about in addition to that were, even in St. George, where clearly you've done some great things, when I go there and talk to constituents as the chair of the Dorchester County Democratic Party, they asked for an urgent care facility. And you know what? You guys gave them a, not an urgent care facility, and said, tough. And guess where the nearest urgent care facility is? All the way down here in Somerville. Oh, and I guess shrugging your head at me because I'm a Democrat is very helpful.
No, it puts it in its proper perspective, however.
Oh, wonderful. So partisanship is a great way to handle things, just because it makes my opinion.
We never do things partisan. You brought it to the room, sir.
I told you where I was at. People are letting you know where they're from. I'm just letting you know that I'm telling you where I work at. So I guess next time I'll just hide who I am is a helpful way to do things. The next thing I would like to talk about is, in this county, as we continue to grow, there's another issue at hand. Subdivisions become very closer to places where people have property and have had it for a very long time. We have rules in unincorporated Somerville in parts of Dorchester County where firearms discharge is allowed to happen on those people's property. What happens to occur very closely to those subdivisions right now. So what that means is, for example, where I live at in my subdivision, two blocks down, people can use their backyard as a practice firing range, and there's no rules against that. So literally, about a mile and a half from people's backyards, me as a 21-year Air Force veteran with PTSD gets to randomly throughout the day hear gunshots happening around me with no warning, anything else. And when I called the Dorchester County Sheriff Office, and I have video of this, they get to stand there looking at me while there's automatic or semi-automatic gunfire in the background and tell me that there's nothing they can do about it because we don't have any rules for that. So I was curious if, and there's a new development happening over on Old Dairy Road that's going to only further increase this problem, I was curious if we have any intention to do anything about that as we continue to develop in those unincorporated areas, and if there was any plan to do anything about that. Or I guess maybe that's too partisan to ask about as well. But I guess I'll leave it there, because clearly, no matter what I say, it's going to be based on partisanship now, so have a great day.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, the county was notified that a Phase One environmental study has been completed within the town of Somerville on a piece of property that's a potential library site on Gum Street. We'll be going through the process of receiving that information, since, as many of you will recall, the town of Somerville did receive federal funding to try to reactivate sites that are potential brownfield sites. Again, many of you know that this was a site of a former filling station. So as a result of that, we will execute the Reliance Agreement so we can have access to that report and bring a recommendation to county council on procuring that site. And that is my correspondence.
That's very, very good news. Thank you, sir, very much.
Literally found that out today.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is county administrator's time. Again, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Chairman and Council, I have several items for your consideration. The first item is third reading regarding rezoning request number 926 for Jake Marini to rezone 13.84 acres located at Highway 78 near Ridgeville. TMS number 098000090 from agricultural residential district AR to commercial light industrial district CLI asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is third reading regarding rezoning request number 927 for George Tupper III to rezone 6.26 acres located at 754 Orangeburg Road near Somerville. TMS number 14400038 and 178 from single-family residential district R2 to neighborhood commercial district CN asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is also a third reading. This is of rezoning requests, 928 for Janet Lieber to rezone 2.2 acres located at Highway 78 near Ridgeville. TMS number 098000240 from agricultural residential district AR to commercial light industrial district CLI asks for third and final reading.
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Mr. Ward.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of dedication and maintenance agreement application for Homecoming Corner II Phase II, a portion of Homecoming Boulevard and a portion of Summer Tanner Drive, and I will ask that you authorize the start of the road maintenance acceptance period to begin the 12-month maintenance warranty period on those two sections of road.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second and a second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
All right. Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval to reclassify one grade 314 IT technician in the Information Technology Department to a grade 315 senior IT technician position. This position is recommended by IT, our comp and class committee, and administration asks for your approval.
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of a new IT technician position for the ITS department. Over the last three years, we've had a significant increase in our average monthly ticket count as well as IT call volume, and I'll ask that you approve this additional position as recommended.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any discussion? I'm going to, I'm going to throw a little bit of discussion out there simply from the standpoint of when we get into the IT discussions, what many people don't realize is they are here throughout all of these meetings. They are working pretty long hours and trying to get these folks in here to, and not trying to get them in here, but the fact that they show up and keep these meetings running and this IT working is certainly appreciated, and we appreciate what you do, and hopefully this kind of shows that we certainly do recognize that. Mr. Ward. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. That was discussion. Is there a motion? We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Got ahead of that one.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for approval of additional funding for the Somerville Airport Fuel Farm Project. We received two competitive bids. We received two competitive bids, and based upon the actual costs as well as the construction administration testing and inspections, we're asking that you transfer funds from two other projects to this project in the amount of $400,412.36. And then we can look at utilizing the upcoming budget for future grant matching for land acquisition. That is the recommendation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, two seconds. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ward, you know, the other projects that we're pulling from, obviously, the Fuel Farm's very important. Is this the Hangar Expansion project?
No, sir. One of the things that we ended up doing with the taxiway in particular is, there was an adjacent property owner that at one point we were looking to do acquisition of land from. We've actually been able to design the taxiway on airport property, which does not require an acquisition for that. And then the remaining project is one up in St. George where we no longer need to acquire land in the short term. So both of these projects go back a few years, and in cleaning that up, we were looking at a way with current year savings to get this project done without having to secure other funds. So that's where those funds came from.
Okay, great. And then I know I'll get asked this question. What's expected start time for that project upon awarding of the bid?
Once we provide this information, we'll have a pre-construction meeting, and I'll be able to give you a date on notice to proceed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And in full disclosure, the low bidder contested the bid. Otherwise, we'd already be started, sir.
Any idea on construction timeline? Like two or three months?
Only because there are tanks that are involved in terms of acquisition do I hesitate to tell you that specific amount of information. I've got to obtain the tanks once we give them a notice to proceed.
Okay.
Yep. So those are the major components, replacing both the Jet A and the 100 low lead fuel tanks.
Thank you.
So all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Next item I have for your consideration is a request for referral to the Planning, Development, and Building Committee for approval of county subdivision road design standards. I know that requires some explanation. Currently, we require the first and second lift to be installed prior to starting our 12-month maintenance warranty period. And then at the end, at the end of that 12-month period, a 75% buildout, the builder slash developer can come in and request that final inspection. If it passes, then at that point, we would accept the road into our system. What happens sometimes is when you go in and do that final inspection, it requires repairs to be made in the form of patches that while they are structurally sound, they are not aesthetically pleasing. So one of the things we want to consider is if we can hold off in doing the final one and a half or two inches of the final lift and then have that done at the end of the project, we can have a seamless paving of asphalt that will cover those patches prior to the final work being done. So we think this is an opportunity. There are some other concerns that we have with respect to that. If you do not put in the final lift, if you have curb, it will not match during the time before that final lift is installed. Typically, Dorchester County does not have manholes in the middle of roads, but there are sometimes situations where that is required, and that's another concern. Most of all, and I think I included this in the packet, we want to look at some of the other communities that have done this work in this manner and see their experience. I will bring to your attention, if you want to see what it looks like, again, we don't typically have manholes in the middle of the road. If you look at the work being done on Carolina, the final lift is not going to be installed until that project is near substantial completion. Very specifically, near the curb inlets for stormwater is an area of concern that we have in terms of water ponding. But we want to have this referred to the committee so we can have a recommendation back to County Council. This was actually a question that was posed of us by a developer. We are familiar with the fact that some other communities in Ory County are utilizing a similar process, and it reduces the number of complaints from residents that are moving into subdivisions and then have a patchwork instead of a new seamless road. So our recommendation is for referral.
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I'm going to, go ahead.
I mean, you and I were in a meeting, in this very meeting, and I really thought it was a good idea. I mean, so we're actually getting three inches of final asphalt instead of two. And one of the biggest complaints that I get with people is just the patches in the neighborhood after a road is already complete. I think this really will give us some better standards. I look forward to getting the results back. I think Ory County's doing that and some other places that are doing that with great success. So look forward to hearing what we have to say about it.
I think that, and I will add from a comment standpoint, it was nice to have the developer come in and say, hey, this is probably going to cost us more, but in the short run, but in the long run, we have less complaints at the end, and it makes sense. They're going to fix that road that is an inch and a half deep. And then when they're finally closed out, they put that final inch and a half, two inches on top of that. So it is a thicker layer of asphalt, and it is a final thick layer of asphalt. Deal with a little bit of the Berlengy Myers, Luden Drive. If you've been at Luden Drive in the DOT, you will note that the curbs are higher than the edges, and there is some ponding at times, so.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, and this may be brought up certainly when it comes to PDB, but does this apply to multifamily as well or just single-family neighborhoods?
So the road standards actually apply to parking lots and other areas as well. So yes, very specifically in multifamily where you have roads as well as parking lots, we'll be looking at all those standards as they are in the same chapter.
Thanks, sir.
All right. There we go. Just to vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I did it again. I thought it made sense, so. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Mr. Crosby.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, earlier this evening, we held a PDB meeting beginning at 5:31 PM. There were two, three items on the agenda, two for the vote, and if it pleases my colleagues on the dais, we could take them all together as they were both similar results. All right. Fantastic. The first was a request for approval of the roadway connection to Brick Green Road for Stan Tech. And the second was a request for approval to use $500,000 in Green Belt funds as a contribution toward the acquisition of a conservation easement, the terms of which are set forth on the Low Country Land Trust Conservation Easement substantial term sheet dated November 4, 2024, on four parcels of land totaling 296.74 acres located at South Parlor Avenue, St. George. TMS number 058-00-00-027-066-133 and 058-03-04-005. Said conservation easement to be held by the Low Country Land Trust. Both of these items on the agenda were amended to delay a vote upon further information gathering and discussion, the second being a 90-day window for the follow-up hearing to be held.
You've heard the, yeah, you've heard the recommendations of the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Get back to the right page here, folks. Next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hearn.
Thank you. Let's see. This time I'd like to reappoint Mr. Randall Sharpie to the, let's see, I lost him there, Board of Disabilities and Special Needs. And I guess I'll keep going, and I received...
Unless you think we're going to say no to one of them.
Yeah. Received application in my district also for the Foster Care Review Board for Ms. Angela Denise Beldon Middleton. And I'll defer to our clerk. I've got a handful of others, but they appear to be district-specific. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, again, Ms. Beldon Middleton and Mr. Sharpie.
You have heard the two motions for appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
For both, is there any discussion? All in favor of those appointments?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Thank you.
Are there any additional appointments to boards and commissions? I'm going to make one real quick statement here, and I appreciate the clerk. I had kind of tasked her the other day with, and I'll be very clear, the clerk and Erin, our PIO, with looking at trying to put out some public service announcements, if you will, about the opportunity for a number of these appointments out there. She's been able to draw a lot of interest in those, so I certainly appreciate you guys doing that and the public that has applied. If you have applied and have not heard back, still in discussion, obviously, Mr. Hearn's got a number of them. I think I have a couple that I had specifically asked for that were ultimately appointments through, through the chairman. But other than that, I certainly appreciate your effort to get that out there and make that public from that standpoint. Again, no other appointments. The next item on the agenda is county attorney's time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would request that council hold a public hearing regarding the proposed conveyance of real estate owned by Dorchester County to receive public input and public comments. The proposed conveyance is for approximately 138 usable acres, which are portions of TMS numbers 046000023 and 046000128. The properties are north of Spring Road and east of the East Edisto Cooperative Power Line Easement in the Winding Woods Commerce Park. The sales price is $100,000 per acre as surveyed. I'd request that the public hearing be held at this time.
I will open the public hearing. None appearing. I will close the public hearing.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I would request that council authorize the county administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to consummate the sale of this property for which we just had the public hearing, including but not limited to signing the purchase and sale contract as may be amended or modified as deemed appropriate by the county administrator in consultation with county staff, and again, to execute any and all documents necessary to close the sale.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? I actually have one item just to, and I think it's an item of clarification more than anything. This is a, we are approving, authorizing administrator to sell the property. That does not include any additional inducements, enticements, or anything like that.
Purely the real estate transaction.
This is the real estate transaction. This does not include any additional inducements for that property. That, right now, is all on the buyer to make those decisions, so. All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Previously on the agenda, we had, or I was going to request an executive session for three contractual matters. However, based upon my conversations with you, Mr. Chairman, that has been reduced to two. So I would request an executive session to discuss the following two contractual matters with County Council in executive session. The first being a proposed agreement with Polty Group for certain road repair costs and amenity access for the Bridlewood development in Dorchester County. And secondly, to discuss a contractual matter with County Council regarding the contract for the commission and sale of artwork. Request those two items of a contract nature in executive session, please.
So moved.
There is a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. We are in executive session. Folks, if you're hanging out, hang out. We'll be back soon. If not, drive safe. If not, drive safe.
Mr. Frampton, will you bring us out of executive session?
Thank you.
This Chairman Executive Session Council discussed the prior announced two contractual matters. No action was taken.
Do I have any motions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would move that County Council authorize the county administrator to execute the contract with Susie Chissom Incorporated for the creation of the bronze sculpture honoring Sergeant Chris Salles.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'm going to throw the discussion out here very quickly just to state, the county initially agreed to $18,000 to contribute to this statue of S- Sergeant.
Sergeant First Class.
Sergeant First Class Christopher Salles. He's a graduate of Somerville High School Medal of Honor winner with the, in conjunction with the town of Somerville where they, they contributed $15,000. The county contributed 18. This, they are currently in an active fundraising to, to complete this statue to place at 500 North Main or, or in a county park. And just to be able to execute this contract and get this thing going, we, we have agreed to it. Our staff has, has found a way to make certain that it can be paid, so we want to make sure that the sculptor does get their money for it. But there is an active fundraising campaign going with at least one Army Ranger who served with Sergeant Salles and quite honestly, I believe Mr. Salles is, or Sergeant Salles' wife may be, she still lives in the area and she may be working on trying to contribute. So there is active efforts to continue to fundraise. This overall project is a little bit more involved than just the statue and, and I may have a photo of what they're proposing here at some point in time, but it's a, it's nice for us to be able to do that. So that is all I have. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Are there any other motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Friddle.
I would move that the County Council authorize the county administrator to execute the proposal made by Pulte Group in its letter dated March 13th, 2025 regarding the road repairs in Bridlewood subdivision and all matters set forth therein.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? We are unanimous. Are there any other motions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a request for approval of new water and sewer service by Pulte Group for Bridlewood Farms, TMS number 126-00-00-120, near the town of Ridgeville.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Before we close, I have one, I have a request from the administrator.
I just want to thank both of the deputies for being present. One of them who is a former golf buddy of mine, Luther Brown, and I think he's left-handed, but he's in his right mind. But thank you guys for always keeping us safe.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any other motions?
Move adjourned.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.